No, I got that covered.
Okay. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen for Monday, October 6th, 2025. If I were to please stand for the pledge and a silent prayer.
Pledge allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand is one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite in its justice.
Okay. Alderman Alce.
Here.
Alderwoman Cabala.
Here.
Alderman Dorso. Alderman Hunter.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Mosley.
Here.
Alderwoman Martinez-McCarthy. Alderman Nujang.
Here.
Alderman Rinaldi.
Here.
Alderman Rodriguez.
Present.
Alderman Salvia.
Present.
Alderman Talladine.
Here.
Alderwoman Weaver.
Here.
Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Present.
Okay. Alderman DiGiovincarlo.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Okay, we have a quorum. Uh, the presentation for tonight, schedule for tonight was canceled last week, so that is canceled. Uh, with that being said, the next item on our agenda is, uh, public speaking. If you wish to address this board, I ask that you sign up with our City Sheriff, Steve Conway. Please state your name and address for the record. You'll have a five-minute time limit, and I will give you a one-minute warning. Mr. Conway?
First speaker tonight from 45 Pear Street, Sharon Samoska.
Good evening, Sharon Samoska, 45 Pear Street. Before you time me, I would just like to recognize Jane Gudal. She is an amazing person who has changed our world, and she wrote, and I would ask that this be a reminder for us going forward. Somehow, we must keep hope alive, a hope that we can find a way to educate all, alleviate poverty, assuage anger, and live in harmony with the environment, with animals, and with each other. Thank you. Now, I have a question on water pipes. Is information being provided to those people in our city who live in an area that's precarious for something similar to Huntington Avenue? We need to be proactive. Some of our friends told us they were trying to zoom out at 10:11 o'clock at night to get water. If at least they knew that their area may be in danger at some point in time, they could stock up in advance, it would make a difference. But I don't know how we do that, if we can or if we have already. I'm also concerned, the reports today, millions of gallons of untreated sewage are entering our Connecticut waterways from Massachusetts, and they say nothing can be done. I ask you why? Our own plant dumped gallons of raw sewage in the Nagatuck River. We were cited by the EPA and by deep. That was not to continue. Why is Massachusetts any different? Hamilton Avenue, October 12th. Program to change the name in honor of veteran, which I think is wonderful, but will someone please publish somewhere if the roads are going to be closed? There are churches up that street that have worship services that last from 9:30 in the morning to 1 o'clock or 1:30 in the afternoon. East Mountain Park, Friday, 5:45 PM. I am at, on 1555 Hamilton Avenue. A red car was speeding so fast, I could not even see the car. Sunday, 11:30 to about noon time. Three groups of motorcycles that I counted, some not obeying the rules of the road, about 15 in the first and seven in each of the other two, were taking up a whole lane. If first responders had tried to get through there, I doubt that they would have had much success. Would placing a monitor device showing speeds of vehicles there be of use to at least slow it down? Waterbury Hospital. Are you confused? Because I am. Yale proposed to spend $435 million to purchase the three Prospect Med properties. With continued blocks in the sale and misinformation, Yale backed out and ultimately paid $45 million to end the contract. Yukon expressed some interest, but it is reported their bid is $13 million. The appraised price of the property has been $345.3 million. Is Yukon truly interested, and I hope they are, but I have to wonder? Where does that leave us? People are avoiding the hospital, care is substandard. Is a bid of $13 million realistic? Do lower bids cause less ability for this city to recoup its taxes? When we entice businesses to come here and giving them tax perks, the reason should not be one of a hidden tactic, excuse me, for that business to make money for shareholders. It should be to be put into that business and make life better. In the last week, I attended 10 programs state and nationwide on climate change. The thoughts for us? Cooling towers can be cooking vessels for Legionella bacteria without maintenance. Do we have protocols in place? Drain on utilities from big businesses, and the utilities are passing on the costs to consumers. Why should I, as a consumer, and I don't believe this is happening in Connecticut yet, but it very well could if it isn't, why should I, as a consumer, have to pay more for my electricity because big business comes in and puts a drain on the system? I ask you why, and I ask you what we can do. We are suffering enough under the overwhelming taxes and fees that we're paying. Okay. Um, now, EPA cuts are significant, and there is a question if EPA will even continue. Connecticut, I applaud for trying to keep projects viable, but we've talked about that. Resiliency is a big word that we need to hear.
One minute.
To listen and use. What plans do we have? Why do we have so many empty buildings, empty schools, empty houses? They're not being used. Is this something that if this city looks at resiliency, that would be a way to start a good path forward? To come up with a plan that in a disaster, we could use those? Along with the fact that we are now told that in the years to come, our east, our whole seacoast is going to disappear. That means that that water level is coming up very close to us. What are we going to do? I also discovered that there are now funding grants available from the Department of Agriculture and the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station. I ask us to look into those. Some of them can be obtained with charitable organizations as well. PM 2.5 is the next major issue. It's cumulative in our bodies, which I did not know. It's dangerous. We need to be very careful, and my understanding is there's supposed to be someone who monitors this in our city.
That's time.
If we have that person, would you please let me know? Because W E C C needs to know, and I don't know that we have such a position. And it's vital because of the smoke that's coming in now. Anybody can have it, and it's not something that you can walk away from or treat. It will cause serious complications. Can I read my little pitch?
Sure.
Okay. I am concerned for our residents here and throughout the country. We're all humans. We laugh, we cry, we get sick, we work for a living, we go to school, we have hearts and minds and children around us. Each time I visit with my neighbors' childrens, I find joy. I applaud our city and state for standing firm for the democratic principles upon which our nation is founded. I pray we all remember differences of opinion are healthy to make a better way. If we all only did the same job, lived in the same house with the same salary, our world would not survive. For our world does not need us to survive. We need the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I believe that's the last speaker that signed up tonight.
Okay. With that, uh, next item on the agenda would be the approval of the minutes from the Monday, September, uh, 22nd, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion to approve the minutes? Alderwoman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Uh, mayor? Okay, no mayor's report. Uh, with that, we will recess into our committees, and we will start with the finance.
I call the Finance Committee to order. Item number one. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve refunds for the following canceled electrical permits as submitted by Frank Baker, building official. F F Hitchcock Company, H V A C, permit fee $247.50. Yahuda Newman Plumbing Fee, $832.50. Harp Home Services, H V A C, and Electrical, $630. John Lonteri, ISP Solar, electrical fee, $832.50. And J N S Industry LLC, electrical fee, $742.50. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refund.
Second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Standing Committee. Tax overpayments. Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $24,678.91 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., C C M C Revenue Collection Manager. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the refund.
And a second?
Second.
Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
Okay, I call to order the Intergovernmental Committee meeting, starting with item number two. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a memorandum of agreement between the City of Waterbury and the White Collar Employees Association as submitted by Thomas C. Parasot Esquire, Secor Cassidy, and McPartland P.C. Attorneys at Law. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you for recognizing me.
Tom Parasot, speaking on behalf of the city.
Are, um, thank you for coming. Are you part of the union or?
No.
What position do you hold with the city?
Attorneys handling the negotiations with the union on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Um, I was just reading through this, and it looks like this expired in June of '25.
Correct.
So how does the process work when we're? Um, why did it take long? And then what are we doing to kind of catch up to where we're at now?
Negotiations started approximately a year ago. They can't really progress till certain information is available to share with the union with respect to, uh, the costs of the city's insurance plans going forward. So in essence, uh, the negotiations really got down to earnest discussions late spring, once the union had all the insurance information that's relevant to the contract. This is, if not below a paid unit of employees within the city, close to it. Human Resources had identified certain positions within the unit that they were having extreme difficulty filling vacancies when they occurred. The city worked with the union to address that issue with respect to those positions. We ordinarily would try to come together with a three- or four-year definitive collective bargaining agreement. The, one of the lead union representatives became seriously ill, and the union did not want to proceed with negotiations further until that individual can return and captain the union team. We had arrived at a tentative agreement with respect to year one, so what we wanted to do was rather than wait for many months for this individual to recover, um, it was decided that we would come forward and seek approval of a one-year extension of the contract via this memorandum of agreement. The union has ratified this with only two dissenting votes. It was approved by over 99% of their membership, um, and that's what you have before you today.
Okay, so is there any, so then this is an extension of what they currently have? So there's no back pay or anything happening from this being?
There is back pay because we've negotiated raises that would be effective July 1, 2025. So there would be a retroactive component, um, from July 1, 2025 to when the new payroll amounts are processed.
And do you by chance know the schedule on how we're paying it back? Is it going to be one lump sum, or is it through payments?
It, it would be one lump sum to bring people current with what they would be earning for the 2025 fiscal year, or for July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
And if this is approved tonight, when does that happen? That payment? In what month?
The mayor signs it. It should happen within 30 days.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion for item number two? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number three. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen not disapprove of the following individual to the Zoning Board of Appeals under unrestricted reappointment. David Macduff, term 1-1, 2024 to 12-31, 2027. Can I get a motion?
Motion to disapprove.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Anybody's coming for number four?
Number three?
Four.
Number three.
No, number three.
Number three.
Which one is that one?
Do you have a question on the appointment of David Macduff?
Oh, no, sorry.
Got it. So no, no questions on? Any discussion on item number three? Hearing none. All those in favor of not disapproving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number four. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an agreement to enable P and A group to administer the city's Section 125 Plan, which includes flexible spending accounts, healthcare and dependent care accounts, Cobra administration, and retiree billing premiums, as submitted by Heather Boyd, Pension and Benefits Manager, and Michael LeBlanc, Director of Finance. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike LeBlanc, Director of Finance.
How you doing today? What's the, which one is the one we have right now? Same company?
No, uh, this will be, uh, a new company that we would be using, uh, beginning January 1st.
Um, what's the difference between the one that we have right now and this one?
Uh, in regards to cost or services?
Costs, yes.
Cost, it's, it's right in line with what we're currently playing, paying. The numbers that were disclosed in the contract were to establish a basis for a not-to-exceed amount, um, but ultimately, the amount that we would be invoiced on a monthly basis would be subject to the enrollment levels at the given time.
And the services that they're offering will be the same as the ones that we have right now?
Um, with having gone through the, the interview process of, of the respondents that were brought, brought in for interviews on this, uh, contract, um, at the end of the day, we believe the services are going to be, uh, marketably improved, uh, with this company going forward.
Okay. So how much we're paying for the one that we have right now? Estimated cost?
I, I don't have that exact number, but the not-to-exceed amount in this contract is $27,000 per year.
Yeah.
Uh, so I would, uh, guesstimate that, you know, we're probably in the, um, 15,000 to 20,000 range when you consider, uh, the actual enrollment levels. Um, again, the, um, what historically has been done is to establish a not-to-exceed amount, um, uh, so that there, there's the ability to fully fund the contract throughout the course of a given year. But the, the actual cost itself is derived from a per-unit measurement, uh, based on the levels of enrollment.
And how many we have enrolled right now?
So it, it varies. Um, the flexible spending accounts, uh, their renewal is on January 1st each year.
Okay.
Uh, for the employees. And in regards to Cobra, uh, that is just a byproduct of, uh, individuals following, um, uh, termination from the city, they're provided the option to, uh, purchase insurance, uh, through Cobra. Um, and this company would just handle the administrative process of, uh, the billings and the collections for the, the Cobra premiums. And in regards to the retiree billings, um, that is also a number that fluctuates based on, uh, the retirees that choose to maintain, uh, insurance coverage, purchase insurance coverage, uh, through the city versus, um, alternative options that are available, uh, particularly with, uh, teachers, um, at age 65, there is a state option, uh, that's available that in, um, more cases now going forward, um, retired teachers are opting to go to the state plan.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion on item number four? Hearing none. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. And item number five. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a project authorization letter between the City of Waterbury and the Connecticut Department of Transportation for rights-of-way services in connection with raise component two, West Main Street improvements, as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, Engineering Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Hi, how are you? Can you give us your, just your name and your title for the record?
Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Porzio. Um, just a quick question. So I'm looking at the demand deposit for the, to hire a Connecticut DOT, um, what is the word? Now, row, right-of-way, right-of-way person?
Right-of-way division, yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Uh, the right-of-way division of, of DOT.
Okay. So is this a normal practice where when we're on a big project, we, we hire someone from the Department of Transportation?
Uh, ye, yes. Under the, there's a master municipal agreement for right-of-way, which is approved by your board. It's a 10-year agreement, has all the standard boilerplate. And then on a project-by-project basis, DOT, if they're going to do the right-of-way work for the city, and it's, they do it for all cities, they do this P A, and that has all the project-specific info.
Okay.
But yes, we usually do hire them.
And then the demand deposit of $250,000, is that, um, what does our, the real number look like? Like if that's just a deposit? Do we know?
That's the terminology they use. That includes their internal estimate of what the right-of-way needs for West Main Component Two will cost, plus their administrative fee.
Okay.
Ideally, at the end, we get a credit back.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number five? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number six. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an amendment number one to the engineer agreement for raise project component one, engineering services between the City of Waterbury and AI Engineers, Inc., as submitted by Salvatore Di Porzio, Project Manager, Engineering Department. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, so item number eight is going to be subdivided out into A, B, C, D, and E. So starting with item number eight A. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following community development block grant agreement between the City of Waterbury and Greater Waterbury Interfaith Ministries, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Can someone come up to just, um, to give me an overall? I have overall questions for the community block grant, so it probably is you. I just wanted to make sure.
Good evening. John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Goggan. Um, has the community block grant been awarded to the same, um, one, two, three, five entities as last year, or are these different?
So for the CDVG portion of the grant, um, two of these have, or three of these have received funding in the past, specifically the last program year. Uh, those would be Greater Waterbury Interfaith Ministries, Manufacturing Alliance Service Corporation, and the Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association. Family Children's Aid did receive funding, um, a few years ago, not in the last program year, and Matituck Historical Society, to my knowledge, has not received CDVG funding at all.
Okay. And then how do, how do these organizations apply to try to get this funding from us?
So this is a cyclical grant, so our application period starts in late January. My office receives the applications. They're due late February. We go through an evaluation process as a staff, and then afterwards, we bring it to the Citizens Advisory Committee. The Citizen Advisory Committee votes on it, chooses the allocations, the funding amount, and then we bring it to the Board of Aldermen with our annual action plan, usually in mid-July, which then gets approved and sent to heart.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number eight A? Thank you. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight B. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following community development block grant agreement between the City of Waterbury and Manufacturing Alliance Service Corporation, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight C. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following community development block grant agreement between the City of Waterbury and Family and Children's Aid, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight D. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following community development block grant agreement between the City of Waterbury and Matituck Historical Society, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eight E. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the following community development block grant agreement between the City of Waterbury the following Community Development Block Grant Agreement between the City of Waterbury and Waterbury Young Men's Christian Association, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? And similarly for item nine, they'll be subdivided into four. Item number nine A. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following contract for ESG-funded assistance to the Brian Gibbons Homeless Outreach, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Thank you.
John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Goggan. This is just a similar question. So this is funding, ESG is the Emergency Solutions Grant. It's from the city's U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Emergency Solutions Grant Program. So do you guys, is, do you guys, is your department in charge of awarding this? How does this process work?
So it follows the same process as a CDVG grant. They apply in January, we review them, we bring them to the Citizens Advisory Committee, they vote on it, we bring it to the Board of Alderman for approval, and then we send to HUD.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on item number nine A? Thank you. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number nine B. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following contract for ESG-funded assistance to Safe Haven of Greater Waterbury, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstention? The motion passes. Item nine C. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following contract for ESG-funded assistance to the Salvation Army, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item number nine D. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the following contract for ESG-funded assistance to St. Vincent de Paul Mission of Waterbury, as submitted by John Goggan, Assistant Director of Community Development, Office of Community Development. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number ten, which was approved by the Board of Ed at their last regular meeting. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve amendment number one to the Professional Services Agreement with Apex Educational Solutions LLC for Board-Certified Behavior Analyst Services, as submitted by Carrie A. Swain, Clerk, Waterbury Board of Education. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Wendy Johnson, Director of People's Services.
Hey, Aldwin. The one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars increase, is that a new program or is it continuing of the one, the contract that we just did in 2023?
It's additional services. So currently, we have Apex that just services our autism program at Willby. This will be additional services that will be district-wide. So they'll be providing an additional thousand seventy-three hours district-wide to support students, as well as provide training opportunities for all staff.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any further discussion on item number ten? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
Hello. How are you? The autism services at Willby, what does that entail?
So that's already in place. We're actually in year three of that contract, so the amendment doesn't have anything to do with that. But the registered behavioral therapists and VCVAs that are currently under the existing contract are providing oversight and support for not only the staff and students in the two classrooms at Willby High School.
So oversight meaning helping in the classrooms?
Correct.
Okay. So then this is an additional service, you said, right?
Correct.
Okay. And as I'm reading this, so the purpose of the amendment is to provide the Board Certified Behavior Analysts Certified in Restraint and Seclusion Techniques to support the Waterbury Public Schools staff with physical and psychological management training?
Correct. Which is a specific training protocol that staff will be trained in.
Do we seclude in restraint right now?
Not seclusion in the city of Waterbury. But we have to provide certified staff in emergency restraint protocols. In the state of Connecticut, we have to have staff that are certified.
Okay. And we don't, do we have that now?
We do. But they have to have yearly training, so we have to make sure that we have training protocols in place, so the staff will keep that training protocol in place.
Okay. It's just that I thought I read in the newspaper a few years ago that we got rid of like seclusion rooms and things, so I'm just kind of confused if you could just kind of walk me through.
Sure. So seclusion rooms are eliminated in Waterbury Public Schools. That is accurate. So, but according to the law, we can still have them. But in the city of Waterbury, we do not have them. Restraint protocols have to be in place, yearly certified staff, we have to make sure that they're trained. This protocol and this company will assist us in making sure that our staff are in compliance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on item number ten? Thank you. Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. Item number eleven. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Finance and Audit Review Commission's recommendation that the Contract of Employment of Joseph Garvis as the Audit Director, currently scheduled to expire on January fifteen, 2026, not be renewed, and that notice of said approval of said recommendation be provided to Joseph Garvis and the Department of Human Resources no later than October eighteen, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alderman Rodriguez.
Hi, Aldwin.
Hello. Paul Bazelli, Chairman of Finance and Audit Review Commission.
Thank you for coming. My question to you is...
Hold on one second, please. So you're going to ask personnel questions and not, you're going to go to... We're going to go into an executive session. You guys are going to go into an executive session if you're going to ask personnel questions. So you can make a motion to go into an executive session, have a second, and you guys will go into that room, okay? So, and we will invite Mr. Bazelli and Mr. Buckley to the, to the executive session, okay?
Your, for personnel questions, is your, is your question a personnel question?
Well, it was related to the, if we have any people in mind for this job already.
Okay. No, that's fine then. I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you were going to get into the, if we get into the ins and outs, then we'd have to go into executive session. Okay, sure. That's fine. That's fine. Excuse me.
Thank you. I don't know if you heard my question. Do we have already a person in mind for this job if this goes through?
Not at this time, sir.
And how long it will take for someone in this category to be in this position?
I have had some communication with the Human Research Director, Tara Shaw, and she assures me that there are quite a number of candidates, but I don't have any further information. And to further expand on this, Commissioner Buckley and I are meeting with Tara Shaw tomorrow morning at ten-thirty to discuss these same issues.
Who will be in control of this until we find someone?
Presently, we have a senior auditor that we, we're going to be talking to Tara. Obviously, you're familiar. We are all on this commission, but we're charged, per charter, to oversee the audit department. And so being chairman, I've had, you know, quite a bit of contact with the audit director, this audit director, and previous audit director. So I'm hopefully going to continue in that vein with our senior auditor.
One more question. Are we thinking to get more people involved in this commission, or not commission, this job, or we're going to keep the two people we had all the time?
Well, presently, we only have two people, and that's all the city up to this point has provided us with. So yes, to answer your question, she's going to be the two, audit director, and we have a senior auditor.
That's something probably we'll have to discuss in the next budget. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay.
Any further discussion on item number eleven? Alderwoman Zimmerman.
I would like to go into executive session and get into the nitty-gritty. Thank you.
Sure. Attorney Foster, can you remind me of the process for executive session? The, the process for going from intergovernmental to executive committee, executive session for this committee?
You have to be a motion and have to be voted on by two-thirds of the voting members. I'm Attorney Richard Scapini from the Corporation Counsel's Office. I'm a staff attorney for the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I think so. Can I, so I'll enter in a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion to turn to executive session.
And a second?
Second.
All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we will, we will go into executive session and we'll invite members of the Office of Corporation Counsel, the mayor, and I believe Mr. Bazelli, and you said, Mr., Mr. Buckley.
Yo, just come on back. Intergovernmental, come on back. It's going to take a vote. You got to vote to go into this. You got to finish it off. Did you vote, was it unanimous? Okay. I was, sorry. Thank you.
She missed me. She kept on... Sorry. I'm 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 sorry.
Okay, I was, man, sorry. Thank you.
Everybody, just, hold on, guys. Yo, just come on back, intergovernmental, come on back. It's going to take a vote. You got to vote to go into this. You got to finish it off. Did you vote, was he animus? Okay, I was, man, sorry. Thank you.
Everybody, just, hold on, guys. Yo, just come on back, intergovernmental, come on back. It's going to take a vote. You got to vote to go into this. You got to finish it off. Did you vote, was he animus? Okay, I was, man, sorry. Thank you.
Everybody, just, hold on, guys. Yo, just come on back, intergovernmental, come on back. It's going to take a vote. You got to vote to go into this. You got to finish it off. Did you vote, was he animus? Okay, I was, man, sorry. Thank you.
Everybody, just, hold on, guys. Yo, just come on back, intergovernmental, come on back. It's going to take a vote. You got to vote to go into this. You got to finish it off. Did you vote, was he animus? Okay, I was, man, sorry. Thank you.
Everybody, just, hold on, guys. Yo, just come on back, intergovernmental, come on back. It's going to take a vote. You got to vote to go into this. You got to finish it off.
Intergovernmental committee meeting. No votes were taken during executive session. Motion to return.
Motion to come out of executive session? Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
Some of.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the intergovernmental committee is back. Again, no votes were taken during executive session, and we're going to resume back with item number 11. I'll just read it, well, I'll read it again, so we're remembering what we're talking about. Item number 11. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Finance and Audit Review Commission's recommendation that the contract of employment of Joseph Garvis as audit director currently scheduled to expire on January 15, 2026, not to be renewed, and that the notice of said renewal, and the notice of said, approval of said recommendation, be provided to Joseph Garvis and the Department of Human Resources no later than October 18, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we're clear. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. That's it for the Intergovernmental Committee. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay, with that, we will return to the regular order of business. The following items are on consent calendar. Items one and two are on consent to approve. Item number three is on consent to not disapprove. Items four, five, and six are on consent to approve. Item number seven is a receivable place on file. Item, items eight A, eight B, eight C, eight D, and eight E are on consent to approve. Items nine A, nine B, nine C, and nine D are on consent to approve. Items number 10 and 11 are on consent to approve. And unfinished business, item number two is a receivable place on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Approve the consent calendar, right.
Alderman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Seeing none, all is in favor, approving the consent calendar, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved. With respect to the standing committee, the Chair will recognize Alderman Salvio. The Chair of the Finance Committee?
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $24,678.91, as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CC and C, Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso, seconded by Alderman Mosley. Discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving the refunds, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the refunds are approved. Alderman Lopez, you want? Alderman Lopez, you want? Did you raise your hand? Okay, all right, okay. With that, that's our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Mosley? Yes, oh yeah, so before I get into that, before I go to the order, Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, we're having a combination meeting with the Board of Ed, Board of Alderman, 6:00 PM at Rotella School. So, hopefully, everybody can make it. If you can, we understand it was late notice, but 6 o'clock at Rotella School. Mr., Alderman Mosley?
Yes, thank you for recognition, Mr. Chair. I just want to take a moment to formally recognize and speak to the memory of the late Sam Dambrosi. As many of us know, Sam recently passed away, and we thank Sam for his work and dedication to the city of Waterbury. Also, not just the city of Waterbury, but the state of Connecticut and the United States of America. Sam will be greatly missed here in the city of Waterbury, but especially at the YMCA, where he loved to spend time.
No votes were taken during executive session. Motion to return.
Motion to come out of executive session.
Yep. I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the Intergovernmental Committee is back. Again, no votes were taken during executive session, and we're gonna resume back with item number 11. I'll just read it again so we're remembering what we're talking about. Item number 11. Your Intergovernmental Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Finance and Audit Review Commission's recommendation that the contract of employment of Joseph Garvis as audit director, currently scheduled to expire on January 15, 2026, not to be renewed, and that the notice of said renewal... The notice of said... Approval of said recommendation be provided to Joseph Garvis and the Department of Human Resources no later than October 18, 2025. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we're clear. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? The motion passes. That's it for the Intergovernmental Committee. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Okay. With that, we will return to the regular order of business. The following items are on consent calendar. Items 1 and 2 are on consent to approve. Item... Items 8A, 8B, 8C, 8D, and 8E are on consent to approve. Items 9A, 9B, 9C, and 9D are on consent to approve. Items number 10 and 11 are on consent to approve. And unfinished business. Item number 2 is receiving placed on file. Alderman Dorso, is there a motion with respect to the consent calendar?
Approve the consent calendar, Dr.
Alderman Weaver?
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Any additions or deletions to the consent calendar? Seeing none, all is in favor of approving the consent calendar? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the consent calendar is approved with respect to the Standing Committee. The Chair will recognize Alderman Salvio. The Chair of the Finance Committee?
Your Finance Committee respectfully recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the Director of Finance to make refunds to taxpayers representing overpayments of tax bills in the amount of $24,678.91 as submitted by Frank A. Caruso Jr., CCMC Revenue Collection Manager.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Dorso. Seconded by Alderman Mosley. Discussion? Hearing none. All is in favor of approving the refunds? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? The ayes have it. The motion carries, and the refunds are approved. Alderman Lopez, you want? Alderman Lopez, you want it? Did you raise your hand? Okay. All right. Okay. With that, that's our business for the evening. Is there anything for the good of the order? Alderman Mosley? Yes. Oh, yeah. So before I get into that, before I go to the order, Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, we're having a combination meeting with the Board of Ed... Board of Alderman, 6:00 PM at Rotella School. So hopefully, everybody can make it. If you can, we understand it was late notice. But 6 o'clock at Rotella School. Mr. Alderman Mosley?
Yes. Thank you for recognition, Mr. Chair. I just wanna take a moment to formally recognize and speak to the memory of the late Sam Dambrosi. As many of us know, Sam recently passed away, and we thank Sam for his work and dedication to the city of Waterbury. Also, not just the city of Waterbury, but the state of Connecticut and the United States of America. Sam will be greatly missed here in the city of Waterbury, but especially at the YMCA, where he loved to spend time talking with folks from the community. But we thank Sam for his service and also for his longtime chairmanship of our city's health department. So thank you.
Anything further? Someone else have their hand up? I thought it was Kristin. All right. Anything else? All right. So I have one for 12 o'clock Sunday, October 12th, at 12:00 PM on Route 69 and Hamilton Avenue. There'll be a renaming... A road renaming for Corporal Thomas Kavanaugh, who was killed in Vietnam. So with that, seeing no other news, Alderman Dorso? Alderman Weaver? Motion made in second. We are adjourned.